We'll get this meeting, we'll call the meeting to order, may I have a roll call please?
Here.
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 Here, if you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Doral.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, any public comments, please step towards the microphone, anybody that wants to make public comments, alright, seeing as there are none, the first item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes from the July 26, 2021 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the July 26 meeting, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve vouchers for payments in the amount of $407,901.66.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $407,901.66.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we had a request from Mr. Felkner to speak to this.
Is that voucher list?
I have three project closeouts on this list, one is for the 2021 crack sealing program, that is village-wide crack sealing, that project is for closure, I'm gonna close out for $6,800. The next one on there is the 2020 paving program, if you recall, that was Suri Chesim Cameron and the municipal lot behind Senior Tomas, that was, that's on there for closure for And the third one on there for the closure was the industrial and progress drive bio-retention for the sum of $7,596.25. And if you recall, that whole project was, we got, we were reimbursed to half that project by a DNR grant, so, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thanks Dave.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor of the vouchers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that motion is carried. The next items that we have are considerations of actions related to licenses and permits, we have consideration of a motion to approve a restricted species permit. Is the person here?
I have right here.
I think it's good, they're not here, but I think it's good that people do just say their questions right out of the gate.
I'm just curious that, I see they were having a male and a female, so I'd be worried about the rooster crowing in the morning and being a nuisance to the neighbors.
In the past, we've never done that.
Right, right. I looked for an ordinance on that and I could not find anything, cause I remember us turning someone else down because they said they couldn't have a rooster. I know there's a rooster two houses down from my mom, and it doesn't just do it in the morning, it does it all day long, but maybe that's not normal, I don't know.
It seems to me that the biggest objection for it were the neighbors, that the neighbors are the ones that came in and said, "We don't want it, we don't want a rooster there." And, you know, the board agreed with it at this point, but, I don't know, did I, did I get a listing of all the neighbors that have signed off on, on this? I got pretty pictures and just a name of what it's gonna be, but usually the neighbors around that have.
There's no neighbors signature.
No.
It's a dense area.
With neighbors, on the main, main road.
Yeah.
The board can do whatever, the board can request that the signatures be made, the board also could deny outright, even though they're not here, the board could do whatever, I mean, you know, a motion can be made to do whatever the board feels is appropriate. The board can postpone it because they're not here and have the village, you know, someone on the village staff reach out to the person putting in the application, saying that they wanna talk about it more, it's completely up to the board.
I would also ask on back of what Donna said, you know, having a male and female, are they planning to, in the future, have baby chicks and then sell them, because that is against ordinance?
Okay.
I'm just curious.
I don't know, I don't know if they want eggs or whether they want baby chickens, I don't know.
That would also be something that we'd need to know, I think.
My guess would be eggs, I don't know for sure.
I thought they said only a male and a female, in the application, it didn't say anything about chicks.
Right, but.
Don't know at this point.
Well, I don't know how it happens, they just come in eggs in my house.
Well, that's why, if they don't become chicks, if they just have the eggs, if they just take the eggs, they won't become chicks.
Oh, okay, just checking.
They become food.
So we have denied before with the rooster?
Oh yeah.
Okay.
Last machine we did.
I'd make a motion to deny the request.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the request for restricted species at the address listed on, on the application.
I would like to just make the, the offer to the person that did this and is not here, that if they wanted to come back and have just the female chickens for eggs, that we could consider, they could refill out the paperwork and we could consider that, so, that person would like to.
Yeah, I would concur with trustee Doral on that, considering that this just looks like it's a Google snapshot of the typical weight of a female and male, and just double check that it is for sure going to be a male, and if so, then are you interested in two chickens, like that kind of?
So would it be fair to say for clarity, we're denying it as it was proposed, cause a lot of times if we, you know, make a motion on something, typically there's supposed to be a year before it comes back up again, but we are allowing that if they change what they're proposing, including the species or the gender of the chicken, that they can come back, even if it was next month, is that, they can come back or at least request.
I agree.
Okay, okay, just wanted to clarify that, any other discussion?
Do they have to pay the $25 again?
I would, I would presume not.
I'm just asking.
Usually if a permit doesn't go through, if I'm not mistaken, I can ask the clerk, but that money would then go back to the person.
Yes, I believe in this case, we said so few restricted species, but I think that our practice is that, that if they have additional information, that they would have conditional fee to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm gonna call the question, the motion was to deny it right now, as requested in their application, all in favor to deny their request, all in favor to deny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that motion is carried, sorry, I said those words about 18 times, or it's always tough when you're saying "all in favor" after you're saying the word "deny". At this time, I am going to vacate the seat of the village president, and I am going to go out into the seating area.
I call upon the board to make a motion to appoint trustee Michael Myers to serve as the chair of the rest of action item three for today.
A second.
Any objections to that?
All in favor?
I can't do that, cause I'm the governing, so I just call upon the board for it.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
And then he would then, he's fine with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you trustee Myers.
Do you need my W-2 forms or? Whatever, alright, we, we're talking about, we've got an application for a Class B beer and a Class B liquor license for applicants of Grist Mill is here.
Aye.
And the agent Jeffrey Fannerstill?
Correct.
Would you like to comment on your, on your ideas, or, you've got all the documents, everything's been submitted, the applications, have they been completed?
The application has been completed for the request for the liquor license, as talking with village staff, as they stated, if everything goes through, then those checks get turned over to the village for that liquor license, so that it can come into place. As you see in the notes, when the current owner of Hoggers Pub turns in their liquor license, then automatically, there would not be a loss of business, and then Grist Mill would have the license, I would be the agent, there is an additional application that you will see actually at the next village board meeting, which will actually be for a bartender's operator's license for myself as the agent, the village staff requested and thought it was best practice to have that be in place.
So as the agent then, you're saying that you would have the license?
I will be the agent of the liquor license.
Right.
And the village will not, due to best practices, the village will not give that liquor license until the three, those three caveats have been met, maintain, being able to get control of the building, having the operator's license, operator's bartender's license, and there was one other item, I'm sorry it's eluding me, but I believe it was in there.
The auxiliary questions?
Responsible beverage serving course.
Yeah, there's the responsible beverage serving course, and then there was having control of the building.
And hoggers surrendering.
And hoggers surrendering, those are the three things that have to happen before the village will then do it. What this does, the reason for this, it, what it does help is there isn't a shutdown of business, obviously each day if the business were to be shut down without a liquor license, it can't operate without one, obviously, but what it does is it maintains, from a business standpoint and a financial standpoint, not a lot is going to change, other than some signage, which still will come before the board, obviously, or start with the plan commission, but we won't have to shut down for a day, so when it gets turned in, then the new license can be in place.
Okay, any, any questions, any?
That makes sense, just keeps continuity, there's one surrendered, the other one's initiated, smooth transition.
Yeah, there is no problem with short periods of time where they have their license, let's say is not transferred, if it's turned in, and if it's a few days, that's not a problem as far as it being, have to be returned to the village, I think we give it, don't we give it like 30 days or?
Forty-five out of 60, they have to be over.
Forty-five, 60 days for that transfer to go through, so.
I don't, just if I could throw in, I don't know if that's accurate, if a liquor license is held by somebody else, the new ownership could not do it, so also it's on a basis of trust on, on myself and the corporation, the Grist Mill, the license, I would not be able to do anything to operate as an agent until the license is turned in, a vote at this time helps solidify that the, the bank lending the money for the purchase knows that there's not gonna be any lost time, the board and the village of Heartland has already stated, yes, you're getting that liquor license, so they know it's been secured, based on the fact that if those things happen, securing the property.
I'll call a question.
Public hearing.
Public hearing?
Yes.
When's that, we have to schedule that?
Public hearing to receive comments on the liquor license.
Okay. Okay, so we gotta set up a public hearing?
Gotta have it, we're having it now.
We're having it right now.
We have to open the public hearing.
So I'll open the public hearing, is there any comments or anybody that wants to talk or address this? You can stand to the microphone, if there are no questions or nobody has any comments, we'll close the public hearing.
Do we have a timeframe of when this will transpire?
It will be within the first two weeks of September, we were notified today that the closing, originally it was gonna be set up for August 9th, there is some things that have to be done, inventory, things of that nature, to make sure everything's down to the penny, but it will be, it will be, they don't know the exact date, but it's gonna be the first or second week of September, there's a 95% chance it's gonna be in the first week of September.
Okay.
But it'll be in the first or second week.
Thank you.
Of September.
Okay, consider the action to, related to the issuance of the Class B beer and, and Class B liquor license to Grist Mills?
I'll make a motion to approve the Class B beer, Class B liquor license for premises located 375 Cottonwood, the Grist Mill, Jeffrey L. Fannerstill agent has stated the stipulations in the meeting notes here.
I'll second.
Call the question, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstayed.
Okay, so we, public hearing is closed, I'm retired, and we'd like to reinstall our president. The pressure's off.
Teasing, I'm teasing.
I think you both, you were calling me up here.
Yes, he did.
I just wanted to clarify.
No, he did.
I'm back. Alright, next, the item on the agenda now, do I, does the board wanna take a vote of reinstating me, I feel more comfortable doing that, or do you think that we should just?
Is all in favor of reinstating Mr. Fannerstill as president of the, of the village board?
I didn't know.
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, okay, 100%, okay, very good.
The next item on our agenda is a first reading of an ordinance amending 82-4 of the Village of Heartland Court of Ordinance regulating parking limitations.
Good evening, Tori Mesko, Chief of Police, Heartland Police Department, what you have in front of you is a draft ordinance that our village attorney put together in relations to curbside parking, per some of our previous conversations, I think it includes what we're trying to get out of the curbside parking, both from the business side of it and how they go about providing the curbside pickup, and then also if a customer or someone parking their vehicle would violate it, it would give us some opportunity to cite that individual for violating the ordinance, so it works for both sides. Again, this will be our first reading, but I'd take any feedback, I could obviously, if anything, if something was missed or something that you thought was gonna be in there isn't, please let me know, and we can obviously bring that back to you if there's something that you're not seeing, that you would like in it.
I liked everything that you put in there.
I do, I know that there's been some questions on this in the past, I just wanna throw out, for, since this is an ordinance change, and this is only the first reading, and we have all the way up until three, even after three, the board doesn't have to approve anything, but it is within the full, is the full scope and the full rights of each person on this board, just letting you know if all of a sudden there is something that you want changed, you don't have to wait till the third reading, you can request those changes, or at least put them forth and, and, you know, ask to have amendments made, anything that you see fit, that's gonna make it the best ordinance possible, I just wanna make sure that that's clear for everybody, I know sometimes that gets a little odd.
And this, this ordinance would fall under our parking ordinance, so 82-4, it would fall into subsection A, which was previously reserved, so it would just be taking up that empty section, and then would be followed by our other parking ordinances, like winter parking and such.
Good job ladies, cover everything I wanted.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
Thank you chief. The next item we have is consideration, I'm sorry, discussion and consideration of a modification to the outside food vendor policy, trustee Doral contacted me, we got it on the agenda so that it can come back up, we've had a few confusing moments in the last month or two, as these have been popping up, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to trustee Doral, if there's anything that she just wants to say about it.
Absolutely, thank you, so first of all, just for a point of clarification, this is a discussion of modification for outside food vendors for the park policy, it just says outside food vendors, which does bring up a different topic that we never did bring back our food truck. It just says outside food vendors, which does bring up a different topic that we never did bring back our food truck for the village itself. So I would like to see that brought to the agenda soon. But, so the park policy as written, my, my only thought is, is that I think we've, we've just kind of gotten too into the weeds with it. As I pointed out at our last meeting on February eighth, when it was brought up that the different organizations had brought forth to the park board and prior to that meeting, I had pointed out that the Chamber of Commerce had actually filled out all their paperwork correctly. And this is exactly what I think we should be seeing, so I think this should be brought to us. Anyone can go back to that February eighth meeting and see where they have all of their certificates, they have the map drawn out, an outline of what's going to be at the event. I think that's what needs to go to the park board, then the park board comes to, recommends it to come to the village board. Once the village board looks over the whole concept, I think it's up to us to decide whether we move it forward or not. Once we approve it, I think it goes back to the park board and we just should be out of it. I think that the park board, we have a great park board and they can decide the small details. We just are here for the overall big concept of it all.
Can I ask a question on what you were saying? You were saying that you think that they should bring the forms forward and goes to the village board first and then, or to the park board first, then to the village board?
Right, they go to the village and they get all their paperwork, they turn it into Darlene. It goes to the park board, looks at it and says, yes, we're, we're going to move it on to the village board. So this all went before the park board first, then it came to us and we approved the concept of it, that they were going to have food trucks. We had a map, we had everything in front of us. Then it went back to the park board with the, well, according to the policy, it should have went back to the park board for the food trucks and then back in front of the village board to say yea or nay to the food trucks. I just think that was a lot of extra steps that wasn't necessary.
Okay.
So in my opinion, I think the only thing we really need to change off of the outside food vendor policy for the parks would be to remove the last section for the Heartland village board prior to the date requested. I think it should come to us, come to the park board, come to us, then go back to the park board and we're, we're just done.
Okay, I'm only, I'm a little confused on it and the only, are we talking just for the event, including the food trucks that we're looking at? Only because of my, this is my interpretation, right now I believe, and if you have it in front of you, it's that policy, yeah. On there, I believe it says it, they can operate at events in the park, but only if they've been to the park board and village board first.
Correct.
Is that, that's what it says right now.
Right.
And you would want it to go through that, I'm just clarifying, but you want it to go through that and then go back to the park board and then it's done?
Want it to go through the park board like it did. Starts at the park board.
Yep.
Came back to the village board, we, we approved the concept of the event. So there will be five food vendors, whatever we want that to be or say what that is.
Yep.
Then, once we approve it, the park board can worry about what park, what food trucks are going to be there. Vendors, all that kind of stuff.
So when it comes to us, it's not going to be the individuals. Here's my special events permit, here's the map, and I'm having five or four, whatever, fi- four food trucks. We approve that, but it doesn't matter whether it's Jeff's Chicken Legs or, you know, Donna's, whatever.
Correct, I didn't think it had to come back to us again.
Gotcha, okay. I would, I would concur with that, that I think that that's not a bad, I don't think that there's ever going to be a time we deny. I think that the only thing that scares me with that is, oh, go ahead.
I know, I would like to get the park board's opinion on this.
The member of the park boards?
A member.
I'm a member of the park.
Member.
Well, the only problem that, that you're bringing up is a timeframe period, because now you're talking, you're talking of what, the Friday before or Wednesday before the park board, it has to be turned in for, to be accepted for the park board meeting, right? Okay, then after that it goes to the village board, then after that it goes back to the park board?
No, that doesn't go back to the park board, it's up to the park to do the dealings with all the food trucks. If, if we're going to say like X, Y, and Z food trucks, I don't even know. I, personally, I think if someone rents out the park to begin with, I don't know why any of us would care other than you knowing that there's going to be food trucks, like you've been involved and you go there and you'll say the trucks are there, 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 and there.
Right.
I, I don't even know why it would go, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna have to see what food trucks there are, if that's what this board wants, then I would say that it should only be through the park, not park board, parking rec, not through the village board for those details.
Okay, I, I mean, I was under the impression in the last couple of meetings that maybe that the village board didn't even want to be bothered with that second step, but.
I think she's stating that she would like, like if an event gets approved.
So she wants to see the whole event, including whatever else is.
The village board would see that whole event with the possibility of food trucks.
Okay.
If the village board has approved that, at that point, if there are individual food trucks.
Okay, because part, part of the issue was the cakes place, you know, they missed the park board deadline, so obviously they couldn't get in. And that was a bone of contention to some of us.
But I think the point there would be, it's just going to say, there's going to be food trucks there. And if, like the last one, if it got here in the spirit of the moment, we don't need to prove it to hold up the event. It falls back into the parks.
Okay.
Here's, here's, here's what Tim is saying and I want to jump in here, and I think it's important to say this. And I do agree basically with what Donna's saying, where she's saying, or trustee Doro is saying, somebody else can decide on what trucks. We really don't care that much, there's certain things we really do care about and I don't, and please don't take this in the wrong way. I don't believe it would be missed, but if membership changes, I believe it could be missed. There is certain things from the village standpoint that we have to make sure are approved. And I'm get afraid that park board would say, yeah, you're fine, or that someone starts thinking, if Tim says it's fine, park board said it's fine, which isn't really true, you got to have a quorum, you got to have a vote.
The end it is.
But we got to have one, we have to have that insurance certificate and, and make sure that those things are in place. And where we've really run into the problems, I think in some of them, who was it for?
Who just did it for, it was for the kids' day?
I mean, they were, who, Dee Dee was on the phone at three forty-five on a Friday, it was really tough. So I think if we do that, at some point there does have to be a deadline, because everybody thinks, well, no, we'll just say it's okay and we'll drive the trucks and we'll put them there. There is other things that the village has there for, for protection for the village as a whole, just from a liability standpoint.
I think at, at the presentation of our meeting, then we will, if we approve it, then we will tell the applicant to make sure their paperwork is turned in in time for your meeting, which would be the following week, right?
Is it not turned in at your meeting?
Right.
Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't.
But like, so the example you just brought up, that most recent children's day, you, park board never saw the vendors.
We never saw the vendors, we approved them because we were told there was going to be four or five and we just said, well, when you get them, let us know when.
And that's what, so I'm just trying to figure out how you guys want to write this, because if, if we approve the event in February and then the village board approves it in March, do you want it to go back to the park board with who the trucks are?
I personally don't think we even need to, to know, as long as they do, as long as their paperwork's done properly and we have the map and we see that all their forms are filled out, I don't know why we're, we're getting into that. I mean, the village would be aware of who's coming because they'd be buy, getting the seventy-five dollar, paying the seventy-five dollar fee to have it there. So we would know food trucks that are coming in.
And I totally agree with you, one of the things that happened, now if I'm not mistaken, I think for like kids' day, they paid all the seventy-five dollar fees right up front and then sent the trucks in to, or told the people in the trucks, you know, send your liability in, and there's one other form, I think. Do we have a county form where that shows that they're actually a viable food truck?
Yes. County licensing.
I do, I do agree with the direction this is going though, where it goes more onto staff. But I think the piecemealing of, or having staff run, like, I mean, that one, on that Friday, I would not have been upset with her, and I can speak for the whole board, but if Dee Dee would have said, it's three thirty, I'm here, that we had people that were on vacation, quite a few of them, and I'm trying to get the village set for, for closing, but I can't chase you down. But she had to go around to call people to say, what should I do, because they're saying they don't have to send this form in. I just, if we do that for staff, I think we need to back them up also. Instead of being upset with them, where, I mean, she could have said to that person, you're done, you're not, don't, don't come and put it in.
Sure.
You know, because a lot of times organization gets upset with staff or with different boards. I do agree, it's not so much the one, but they got to have that paperwork in in a timely, even though they may not know what trucks are coming, we can't have that stuff coming in on a Thursday before a big event.
Right, well, I mean, that's kind of, that was kind of out of our control.
Right, right.
I guess I'm really confused, because we have it set up, if someone wants to build something in Heartland, they come to give us the concept and they make the presentation to us to see if this is going to, is acceptable to the board, if they want, do we want to do that? And we say, yes, then we go, because we're not experts at that, we send it to the park, to the planning commission. The planning commission makes it all work, this puts it back. The planning commission then makes it, forwards it to us for our approval.
Yep.
It's not for us to go back and say, how many light fixtures are you going to have or, and who the hell cares what food vendors are there? I mean, this is just something, if we approve the event, let the people run their event. Why the heck, why do we have to come to, well, we wish you'd have pink, you know, little napkins out there, you know, no. It's none of our business, they, we approved the concept, they're going to go pay all the money, they're going to lay it out, they're going to give the park board the forms that are needed, the park board is going to take it, make sure everything's complete. They're going to come back to us and say, hey, it's approved, we approve it, and do we want to approve it? Not for us to dissect it and go in and talk about it, because we don't care what it is, do we?
No, but my, and for the record, I want to make it very clear, Mike, I wasn't talking about we want a pink truck or a blue truck or we want chicken or beef. I was talking about actual liability insurance that has to be given for the village.
That's given to them in the informed insurance as part of the paperwork that goes to you.
In most cases it isn't. In most cases, they turn in the form, am I right, Tim? They give, they, they don't give all the paperwork, so in this case we'll have to demand the paperwork right away.
But then why, why, then the park board is not, is not going to approve it to come back to us?
Yeah, that's kind of where my mind is. I think we're, we're mixing the policy with the procedure.
Yep.
Right, so we as the board need to decide on what do we want to see, when do we want to see it, and we're out. And then we need to advise the staff, because we don't need to micromanage the process, we don't need to micromanage the staff and we don't need to micromanage the park board. So then they need to collectively come together and the park board needs to say, we need to see this, whatever. So if somebody goes to the village and says, I want to have Robin's Kids' Day at Nixon Park, then the staff behind the counter is prepared to say, okay, great, when do you want to have it, let me see if that's available. Oh, well, you know what, you want to do it next week? Well, actually, the procedure and policy is, that's what needs to happen, and I think we're, we're adding too many elements into it. So we just need to make a decision on the policy to then support that procedure, to guide the staff on what they need to know.
And, and if I can add that, and one more step with the staff is to say, okay, then if this date is available, we'll put you down, but now you got to make sure your paperwork is turned in.
Your paperwork needs to be turned in, and here's the date that it needs to be done by.
Has been slipped a little bit.
Robin has a very good point though, here's the day it has to be turned in by, because if you just say, turn your, you will have people that will come on Sunday.
Right.
And be like, well, I dropped it in the drop box.
Correct.
Or they'll be at the counter at ten AM and you may not think it's happening.
Sure.
But I'm being honest, it has, and it all comes down to being right up front and saying, you have to have this and this and this, period. And otherwise, I mean, we can't, and that the only reason that the village, I don't think we've ever turned one down, and I know this is going long, but that's, I think there's a misunderstanding sometimes, even, and, and for our staff. Now what happens with our staff and this, and I'm just, I'm not, our staff is outstanding, our park board's outstanding. But what happens is, once we approve something, if we don't have those forms yet, it turns into the village or the park board are bad people, because they're not letting that food truck come in. But if something happens where someone grazes the side of a food truck and cuts their arm really, really bad and needs a hundred and ten stitches from a jagged piece of metal, if someone goes to sue, they're not going to get a heck of a lot of money out of the park board, but there's plenty to be got, or the food truck for that matter, but they're going to get a good amount out of the village, hence we make them have insurance, because they're on village property.
Yeah, so I, I agree with trustee Doro, I mean, what she's saying is, is that we have this policy, but now we need to set, like, what is the process to have people execute it, right, because it's going back and forth.
Correct.
I don't, I don't know if you'd agree with this, and I, I did talk with Mr. Holquist a little bit about it, and I think it's kind of the same of what you're saying. What if on the special events form, when they're coming for, forward first with special events, would you have to do pretty much in advance? When they come through for that, are you going to be having the mobile food trucks or whatever you want to call it, whatever the exact phrase is, but mobile food vendors? How many are you having, you can have up to five, if they check five, village is good with it, you're right, that's concept. Now it goes back to park board? All I would ask is, I, I personally, I mean, I would not be for this if park board was going to approve, or, or somehow we just have to make sure that we know that we have to have those insurances.
Sure.
I would just hate if something happened and it turns into a one-off, where it's like, ah, we trusted them, but they just, they never turned it in and, I, I don't know, and all of a sudden we find out we're not named in their insurance and we're not covered and it just would turn into a mess.
Isn't it easy thing, just have a checklist and all?
All, all thing on checklist needs to be a hundred percent.
And we hand it to the person.
One week before event or whatever the timeline.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If you go back through, again, if you go back through and you pull what the Chamber of Commerce had put together and put in their packet, if that became the checklist with the insurance and everything else, before it can even go to the park board, you have to have all these papers and the clerk can, the people at the village can look it all over and go, like, they have everything? Here it is, park board, and then park board will say yea or nay. That same package comes to us, just like it did.
That's the procedure.
I agree with that, because I don't, I mean, we don't really, if someone's renting out the park, if I'm renting out the park for a big birthday party for one of my sons, you know what I mean? I don't know why you're telling me what, I mean, as long as they have a county thing that says that they can be a food truck and they're turning in the insurance form to the village, then I should, you know.
I think we have to find a way to assist the individuals that are interested in having events here, right? And like, I think we always want to learn from whatever's happened, and so we instilled a food vendor policy, but we had already approved events, and so now we had to backtrack and we were kind of running back and forth. And so this is just us trying to make it even better than what it is, because we want to make it easy. We want the, we want the public to have events in our parks, they're great parks. We want you to bring in food trucks, we want you to do those things and enjoy them. So I, I think like actually handing them a piece of paper saying, here are the things that need to be done and here is the date that they need to be done by, please let me know if you have any questions and my information's on there, I think would be helpful, because then they're not anticipating, like, what do I need to have if I go to the park board or if I go to the village board too? Because that's tough, right? Somebody's going to get up in front of us and they're presenting their concept plan and all of a sudden now Robin Lutke's asking random questions out of left field and they're going, I didn't prepare that. We know as a village board, the park board knows as a village board, the staff knows, this is what they came with and this is what they're prepared for.
Right.
And I think the staff should direct that checklist, that's, that's them that's going to oversee it, right?
I, I agree with you, it, it does get tough, I don't know, Mr. Holquist, if you agree, but in, in most cases when this has come up, it's people that have already had events here and all of a, it's just they dropped the ball. Or at least that's my perception, you know, I mean, even like with the kids' day thing, they left it on their food people, where it's like, you're running the event, if you leave it on them, whoever's selling the food, that's fine. But the ball might get dropped and you might not get your person in there, I mean.
Well, it's, it's a procedural action that is going to be new now, I mean, until, you know, they can't just come to us now, they have to go to the, to staff first to get the paperwork or the checklist or whatever. And if they don't do that and they come and present, make a presentation to us and they don't have the paperwork, then we really have to decline that, I would think, right?
Yeah, you say you don't even have your paperwork, you can come back next month.
All right.
I mean, don't the people when they're coming to your meetings say that they're coming? Do you get the heads up or do people just show up and say they're doing this event?
No, 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 it's, it's on the agenda, but, but sometimes the paperwork is not with, with that.
Right, I mean, I just make sure it's clear that they need the paperwork in order to be on the agenda.
That's going to be directed from staff then, because whoever puts it on the agenda is the one that needs to, to tell them.
Make sure that the board is correct in the packet for the park board, just like they would for the village board, correct, absolutely.
And I think somehow, well, we can talk about that another time, but I, I think it's somehow, someone that's actually a person that can vote on the board has to be somehow, I know Ryan and I talk once a week, but maybe they're setting up that meeting so you know right away and you can say, hey, you better get this and tell them they got to be there or whatever. You know what I mean, just so that then they're there, because I know at planning commission we do, we started doing that as well, we'd have signs come up, people had questions, but the people weren't there because they thought it would just sail through. Which, and a lot of times it does, but we're like, hey, you got to be here, you know, because when someone asks a question, it's like, how do you approve this if one of the members of the board isn't getting an answer to their question? That's not really too fair, you know?
Right.
So we end up saying they got to be there.
Right.
So I would agree with you.
Lucky of saying that we need to, that we need to have it on there, what's needed. And if it's, we need to guide people better and, and make it more inviting for them, so to put on there, attending the village board meeting is a requirement. I mean, people don't know, what they don't know, they don't know.
Yep.
If they've never been told.
Just have a question, I know with some of these events, like they may be approved in February, March, if we have a checklist, we're requiring the liability insurance, a lot of these events don't even know who their food trucks are going to be for, for months, so how?
We, we need to ask them to come back within, within a certain timeframe, otherwise?
Because a lot of the, I mean, a lot of these events don't get their, I mean, food truck, no offense to them, you, you know it from your business. They're week to week, they, they're not going to guarantee too many events in case something better is.
See, that's, well, go ahead, I was just going to say, that's one area where, on my end, that's exactly the kind of thing that comes up and I, I'm going to be totally, people aren't going to like this, I want people to get food trucks for their events or even more so, go and reach out to one of the Heartland businesses. But if someone doesn't want to secure a food truck because they don't know it till the final week and they say that it's too much paperwork for them to take care of, honestly, I just hope that they go somewhere else, I really do.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's necessarily, I don't know if it's necessarily that it's too much paperwork.
I think it, it just comes from an event planning standpoint, right? And so everybody's organization's different, everybody goes about it differently. If we give them a checklist and we say, listen, you've got to get.
If we give them a checklist, and we say, listen, you've got to get to the park board meeting the month before your event, or whenever it is, before your event with your food trucks, then they know. Okay, that's part of my event thing. But to Trustee Meyer's initial comments, it doesn't, I don't believe it needs to come back here, and then hold the process. I think it would just be an update to the park board of, hey, we just wanted to let you know, we have closed out all the information. We did say we were gonna have five food truck vendors, and you know what? I only ended up with three.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
You know, I think that that's, that's where the park board and the staff work together really well.
Originally how it worked.
Right, yeah.
Originally, it would go through the park board. Once they approved it, at the end, it would just come to us, and, and it would go through us, and then it was done for the. But now, we can just do it at the special events time, and they can handle that. And we don't have to know the specific trucks.
Make sure they know the lead times.
That's what I'm saying, that's what the staff needs to develop with them.
If they don't make the timeline, then.
That will be the issue, is the timeline.
No, but I mean, it's like, the meeting is on this day, and then the village board meets two weeks, and then, you know.
Can I say one thing quick? I just wanted to tell, it's very simple. You want to guarantee it, five weeks. It guarantees that you're gonna have it in on time, and it leaves you one week to spirit. Five weeks before your event, make sure that you're on the park board agenda, because then you'll be on the meeting.
So I, I think there's a confusion for the liability insurance. Yes, the food trucks need to have that, but that's when you're securing your food trucks. That comes later on, when you secure your food truck, right before the park board. What I'm saying for liability is that the, whoever's doing the event needs their liability insurance, and that should all be in the packet when it's first coming to the park board.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Right, right. So the, the food truck one, we know that that comes later, when they get the food trucks. But it's gotta be that final one of being approved.
And Mr. Falton, here, one thing I just wanted to add on to this. I know we're going long, but I think it's good that we're getting this figured out. And I think there's a very simple thing. I think, I agree with Trustee Doro. I think that even if they come and do the liability insurance, I, I do believe, just like when we have rented park pavilions, I've rented one, the person from DPW or someone, maybe it's the PD, but goes out and actually puts the tag that says it's reserved for, just like a person has to have a seller's permit, or an alcohol permit, a Class B liquor license, that's gotta be posted in the business all the time. I think that we need to come up, and that license has to be posted on that food truck, because otherwise PD would never know to say, get them out of here. And that wouldn't be fair. What if someone did sneak one in? But I do think it's appropriate that that thing has to be on the outside. Because they won't, so they won't be getting that actual permit until they've turned in that liability. It just, it creates, I, I don't know if you guys agree with that. I'm just throwing that in there, because I think that there should be something on there that says, yeah, these.
Well, I can tell you that Waukesha County does come and check events, to see if they have their license. They've come before, and walked through the events to see it. So that's Waukesha County that actually that's coming from.
Yep.
And alcohol parks.
Yep. So they go, they do show up at events randomly, and say, let's see your permit, so.
Right. Oh, no, and, I mean, yeah, I just was saying that it might not be a bad idea to have it posted on the outs. Maybe it's a bad idea, I think it's a good idea that it's posted, because for any village personnel, they know right away. Yep, this thing is clear, that came from, I don't know if that's a bad idea. I'm just throwing it out there.
So do we actually need any modifications to the policy? Because, I mean, eventually, when it says at the end, and all requests must be approved by the Heartland Park and Recreation Board and the village board prior to the requested date. I mean, they still have to be.
Right.
So what we're asking then, to, to Trustee Doro's comments is, is that we're asking the staff to develop a timeline, or procedure, or checklist, or something that would work for them, and work for the park board, right? Is that what we're saying? So then there's no, we don't need to do anything, at this point.
Yeah, because it doesn't say to approve the food truck, it just says to approve it.
I have one question about that checklist. So do you, you want staff to develop this checklist? Does this checklist go onto the park board, then back to the village board, okay, this checklist? Or?
I want park board to make the checklist. The park board's final approval. I want them to make the checklist. Staff's very busy.
Okay.
So, okay. I guess I just have a question, because earlier it was brought up that we wanted to go to park board first. Now, I just heard park board has final approval, so is it going to the village? But the checklist is what gets the whole, that's where you're now saying, the checklist is part of the application process, which right now goes park board to village board.
Correct.
But he said if park board is final approval, are we going?
For food trucks, for the, for the, the final details.
So they are going park board, village board, park board.
Yeah, then they, once they get the concept approved from the park board, to recommend it to the village board. Village board says, yeah, sounds great. Then the goal is that they, the staff, and the park board, and the applicant all work together as one. And whatever the process needs to be, that, I think they're good.
I think that's where, and I'm, I'm not trying to sound like a broker, where that gets tough. Our park board meets once a mo, they are not like us. They meet once a month, they're an advisory board. They don't do the sitting down and work, our staff does, but they don't do the sitting down and working with people. They're at work, they're wherever they are, until the next time that they meet.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I get what you're saying, but I still think that the park board has to be involved. Once Robin's Kids' Day comes to Nixon, and all of a sudden I say, well, I'm gonna have six food vendors, I want to always let them know.
Normally, the procedure of what we've been doing is, once we approve it, and, and you guys approve it, then we advise the applicant to deal with DPW.
Yeah.
As far as setup, because we already, we already know what's gonna happen, so we're kind of out of it after that.
Sorry, I thought you meant, okay. I think staff is better than park board.
That's kind of what I mean.
So we discussed with Dave, or they, we tell the applicant to discuss with Dave, and then they, they set it all up. So we're kind of out of it after that point?
Sorry.
No, you're.
So as, as a board?
Yeah.
Can I please say something as the person that works right with DeeDee on this? DeeDee does do, make sure everything is in. It's, you know, it's not her fault if somebody doesn't hand it in, someone doesn't hand it in. And yes, we can give her a deadline, saying, okay, five days before the event, no more food permits. And if we have a checklist, because we have, we have things for the baseball reservations, for soccer. They all have to give our insurance, they have to give their permits, they have X, Y, and Z that they haven't. So it's very easy for staff to say, hey, you don't have this, I'm not gonna chase you down, have it in by X date by this time. Otherwise, that food vendor can't come. It's very easy for us to say that, and back it up, and say, we're not going to chase them down.
But what they were just saying is, the park board's gonna approve the event, the village board is gonna approve the event, park board's gonna get a shot at approving the food trucks. So all of these events, are you going to have to hit a park board with the food trucks?
So we're gonna have to go back to?
Correct.
The food.
So there, if you're having an event, September 15th, you have to make the September 8th park board. So they're gonna, if you're having an event August 30th, you're gonna have to make the August 5th.
So, so why would it go back to the park board on the third time?
That's what, well, no, I was just gonna ask, would it be okay to have?
How did it get three times?
Nope, to the second time, third meeting for the.
Second time, third meeting total.
Would it be okay to have staff doing it? Because park board's not gonna deny any food trucks either.
We're gonna, well, from what, the way this policy is being set up now, is we're gonna know what food trucks are on, on our first initial meeting.
Not necessarily.
No.
No.
It's gonna come through for the event, and you'll know how many.
Right. So we'll have a special event permit, they'll bring it to you, saying they're having the event, and they're gonna have food trucks.
Well, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we have all those applicants have all those food trucks for our meeting?
Ideally. Because they might be coming to you six months ahead of time. Now then, they may not know what food trucks.
That, that I understand, but I mean, and it seems like, we only have, like, the baseball and all that, and soccer. I mean, they, they rent it all the time, so that's, that's not an issue. It's the special events that only happen once a year, that, and they don't understand the policy, or how, the timeframe, I should say. So, that's fine, whatever you guys set up. I mean, I, I just don't want it to be any more confusing to the applicants, especially with the timeframe. So now we're talking five weeks.
Well, what, that's, what about if it went to parks? And maybe we'll, we'll, maybe, we'll kind of streamline this, we're willing to keep this open for five more minutes. I, I would not be opposed to, but I would want to ask, is it okay if staff, if park board has already said, yes, and you can have food trucks, and the village has already said, yep, this event looks good, great? And now, we already know that they have those events, and all that's left up to it is that they get in their $75. They have their, and they, they've already turned in the permit application, they gotta turn in their food truck permit request. Their $75. And they have to list on that permit request, what event are you doing it for? Has that been approved? Yep, park board did it, village board did it, and just staff takes care of doing that, with the board.
It's kind of what my city desk would be saying.
There should be a time limit of how long.
See, this is the thing, we're already two in the week.
Everything's gotta be into the, the staff, or versus like you said, they're chasing down the last hour.
I'm talking about it going back to the park board. I'm saying after the, after the village does it.
We're making this way too complicated.
I'm not, I'm not making it complicated. I was asking a question. Rick, they said originally it would go park board, then village board, then park board. And I was just saying, maybe we could have staff, since that's like with the licenses and stuff. Maybe we could, if I'm being confusing, I, I thought, I was just trying to make it more easy, and plus there's people working that are constantly there for the food truck people, that would make it quicker. If they come into Cali on a Thursday, and the event is the following weekend, that's fine. But if there's no park board meeting in between that, and it had to go to the park board one more time, then they, they wouldn't be able to get it in time. That's all I was thinking for, go ahead.
So, goes to the park board.
Yep.
Gets the concept, comes to us, we approve the concept. It does not go back to the park board after that. Then, because they already know, when they come to the park board the first time, that there's a sheet to fill out, then it's the event planner and the food truck's responsibility to get it all in a week before the event, period. If they don't get it in a week before the event, they're not there. They don't get approved.
Who confirms that the insurance?
Staff.
Okay, but I didn't get my paperwork, my, my one form, I didn't get in, but I still show up.
You aren't gonna have that permit on the front of your truck. And now DPW and the police department, no, that food truck, sorry, you cannot be here. You got, you're a liability to the village, no way.
To enforce that? I'm just saying, I don't want somebody to slip through, and all of a sudden, that's my concern.
Give them all your goods.
Let me believe. Are we leaving it up to you or DeeDee to confirm that we don't have any liability?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Are we leaving it up to you or DeeDee that the village has no liability if somebody gets cut on that rusty truck?
No, I don't think so. I, I think the idea, and that, so the enforcement question, I think it almost becomes self-enforcing in the sense that if you have other food trucks there, and they see their permit in the window, and their competitor doesn't, I think that starts becoming an issue. And it also is a way for the event coordinator to say, I got a permit, permit, no permit, that's a problem. They can almost get involved in that before I even get involved. Anywhere I can self-police things, I prefer doing it that way, because then it just gets handled, and it doesn't get.
And that permit comes from the village?
Well, if that's what you guys decide to do.
That's what I'm asking. So they would actually get that from upstairs, before the event, like, let's say the Friday before, or the week before? And that's what goes in the window?
Kind of to their point, if somebody.
We requested a week in advance, we would give them notification. We would probably give them the permit, unless they hand that paperwork in.
I just want to make sure that we get, my bottom line is just make sure the village isn't on the hook for any liability or anything.
And we won't be. I mean, the chances of something like that happening, it's just typically, that's why we get the insurance. And I wasn't, I mean, I wasn't trying to make it more confusing with what I was saying. I mean, it just, this thing keeps coming back and going back and forth. Originally, when we redid it, it was because the village board wanted to see it. Now the village board doesn't necessarily want to see the trucks, which is fine. I was just only throwing the staff comment in, because I thought that makes it easier for people that are bringing it last minute. But, I mean.
Obviously, not being deeply involved, but being at these meetings and hearing the discussion, I think it makes perfect sense. They approve the overall concept, say it's good to go, bring it to you. Hey, this event, five food truck vendors to be named. And then, you, you guys don't care who that is, as long as it meets the criteria. Staff can say, does it meet the criteria or not? You're in or out, and then make that determination. What I think is the, the block is the time commitment for the meetings is what doesn't work well for the vendors, so.
And that's where staff doing it helps make a big difference.
Yeah, expedite that tremendously.
As long as staff has a hard date.
Well, no, they, they, there has to be a set event that's already been approved for them to be, even be able to go in there. But like, if you rent a pavilion, we don't look at all of that.
But I'm, or the, staff has to have a hard date, so that they're not chasing stuff down.
Staff knows.
That still goes on, but that vendor isn't in there if they don't meet the criteria, the timeline, to get all the paper to them.
Staff does know. As events are coming closer, there's times when staff reaches out to an event coordinator, like happened this last time, and says, we don't have the stuff, what's going on? And the event coordinator says, we told them they had to send it in, so don't worry, you'll be getting it. And it's like, it's Friday.
That's what I mean, it should be.
They shouldn't have to do that. We should have them make that call.
No, I, I agree with you. I'm, I'm just saying it'll, it'll make that a little easier, because they don't have to wait for a park board.
That's why there has to be a deadline. Right, and I don't see why our staff should have to track them down.
They shouldn't.
They shouldn't track them down at all, it's not their job. If, 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 if you're a food truck, and you want to be, if you're a food truck, and you want to be at an event, it's your responsibility to hand everything in on time. You shouldn't have somebody tracking you down.
Right.
If you're not responsible enough to hand things in on time, you're not in the event, period.
Right.
Our staff shouldn't be doing a job for them.
That's what I was gonna say, so it sounds like everybody's okay with this food policy. Do you guys, like, do you want to add something that says all the required checklist that will be created by, like, park and rec board has to be in a week before the event, or?
I think that the village staff would have to give us what they need, so that it can be done, and that we're all on the same page. I think that it should be five days before the event. I mean, that's a drop that date, if you don't have it in five days before. Because if we say two days, then they're gonna bring it in one day before. I mean, but there does have to be a deadline, and it just gets so.
But I don't think we should babysit them.
I think the staff should come up with that deadline.
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah, just to assure their own schedule.
What do you guys want for the checklist? I just, trust me, we have policies that, if certain things aren't on, that the board has gotten upset about, I want to make sure whatever checklist we put together, that the board, that's what the board wants. Obviously, liability insurance, the county food facility license, the payment, all requested forms. I know you're, I just want to make sure that trust, there's probably an event that has some other weird form that's not part of that.
I know, because they have the dance form, they have the temporary Class B liquor license.
I just want to make sure that whatever checklist we put together, that the board is satisfied with.
In outline of the event.
Why, so wait, whoa, 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 for the food trucks, we wouldn't have the dance license, though. The event would have that.
That's what we're saying, the beginning of this event, the concept of the event.
Oh.
This is a special events checklist, you're talking.
Oh, I got, I understand what you're saying.
Put out other, there are two.
I was under, I was under a different impression, because this agenda was just for the, the mobile food truck policy. But that's fine, I mean, I think that we should talk about the events, because we're gonna have to change that for it.
I guess I was just trying to figure out what you wanted for a food truck checklist.
Yeah, it's just those three things, payment, liability insurance, and that they have the event attached that's already been approved. Or the event that they're going to be at.
And their, their license.
And their license, right.
I think everybody should put their thoughts together on this, um, and that we should bring this up at the next meeting. It'd be my opinion that we kinda move past this for tonight, and then we, uh, since we've all heard each other talk, it's up to the board. Um, but, um, would you guys be for that? Staff can bring some stuff back, and then we'll get this solidified, so we can just, you know, have it done for, which hopefully it'll be, you know, what we want it to be, is that cool? I'll make a motion to postpone this till the next meeting.
Which, I'm sorry, which portion, I?
The whole, the, we're gonna post, I, I think everybody's, the information that came from this meeting, I think that we should, uh, I think people should, uh, put some stuff on paper, and that we should, uh, talk about this again at the.
What are we putting on paper?
Anything that someone thinks would be helpful in solidifying the information that we just talked about.
That's what I'm wondering, because we're bouncing back and forth between the concept, special events, concept thing, but the item on the agenda is the outside food policy. So is that, are we putting that to bed? Because we're not changing that policy, correct? It was just for discussion, because really what we're saying is, the policy is okay. It's the procedure, and we just directed the staff to come up with the procedure, because we feel that it's their procedure. Now, we, I think there was a request from trustee Doro at the beginning for just an overall food truck policy for the village as a whole, which is a separate item.
Mm-hmm.
But if we're talking about like a special event piece, is that what you're, I guess that's what I'm asking, is that what you're asking?
The form has to be changed?
Okay.
Because the form has to be changed, whereas the special event, where, um, but instead, you're right, as you said, I don't have to postpone it. I'm in a request that some of these things be on, including that, uh, village-wide, um, ordinance saying no food trucks. And it'll be up for the, I mean, other than parks for special events, but.
Okay.
Uh, we could just let it die, and then we'll move on to the next item, and we'll just, I'll request that it be on. Um, everybody good with us moving to the next item? Okay, uh, now we have discussion and a consideration of a motion to award twenty-twenty-one tree contract to Johnson Nursery in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, forty-six cents.
So with approval of the twenty-twenty-one village budget, funds were allocated to replace, uh, replace street trees. And so what I did is I put out a proposal for replacement of street trees, and also included it with the street trees were the subdivision, um, placement of trees. So as you recall, years back, we, we, the village would put the trees in the new subdivisions right away, and behold you not, the, the driveway would go right where we planted a tree. So we hold a retainer from developers that we put the trees in after landscaping is done. So I included that in on the proposal with the, the thirty-two trees that we have to replace throughout the village. Um, and there's three companies that put a proposal in on it, and Johnson Nursery came in at thirty-seven, nine eighty, forty-six cents. Of that thirty-seven thousand, fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars is coming out of the thirty-five thousand that we budgeted. Uh, the rest will be paid for by the developers.
Okay.
That'll be for the new subdivision.
To give you guys a little bit background information, too, every single one of these developments that went in through, went through, had a certain tree list. So that's why you'll see some of these trees, they may be more expensive than others. We don't wanna have all of the same tree, because if something happens like the ashbore, we'll lose all the trees. So that's why, and I think we're gonna be more diligent in the future, because some of these trees we couldn't even find, correct?
Right, that is correct. Like these jingo trees, which they would've missed the list.
So, so, I, I talked with a couple of tree vendors, and their suggestions were for our street trees to minimize disease, or to stick with the elms, the maples, the locusts, and the lindens. So that's what we are using for all of our street tree replacements. And anything other than that, tree species on this list are for subdivisions.
That they're paying, we're getting reimbursed.
And we're getting reimbursed.
Subdivisions pay ahead of time, with each lot, they pay a certain dollar amount. That, there was a whole tree survey of what the cost of all of those trees for that subdivision would be. So if we knew there were gonna be ninety trees in Windrush, they listed all the species, somebody did a survey saying it's forty-five thousand dollars, and then they divided that by how many per lot. So, all of this is covered, so when you see that ginkgo, that's seven hundred dollars. Couple of years ago, when we put it in, it might've been six fifty, it might be more now. But as new people start building in it, well, they have more expensive prices for the trees as well. So the developer isn't handing us a check, the people who built the house have already handed us a check.
Absolutely.
Is Johnson Nursery the one that planted the trees on southern oak when those trees were planted? At?
I cannot answer that, I don't know.
You know what, as I'm talking, though, I believe that that was, I, I don't know if that was the person putting him in mistake. Speaking of that, can we change the contact at Johnson Nursery? Look at your form.
My question, can we change to the next one, please?
To our DPW director?
That would be great.
Thanks.
That's what I.
Yes, sir.
A couple of people have asked me, they, they've lost trees during our bug infestation.
Yes, Emerald Ash.
Is there, um, can they buy on this contract?
We, we have never done that before. So, so every tree that we took down, the street trees we took down, we were advised, DPW was advised to send a letter out to them, out to every resident, and if they had, had a want or a need for a tree replacement, they would have to make contact with me. Um, so, we, we took down eighty-some trees, and thirty-two residents replied to me of the eighty-two.
Can you say this again? So I need to know this, because.
So we were advised.
Resident in, when it's in the yard or the right of way?
In the right of way.
Okay.
In the right of way.
Because I wonder my front yard, did I gotta call it up, but I was like, well, really?
Yes, we, we don't, uh, we don't.
I think that's what he might be asking.
So, so if it's in on private property, that'd be like somebody asking to have, uh, their driveway replaced when we do a paving project. We send them right to the vendor, so they could, if they're interested, I could send them to Johnson Nursery. Uh, I'll give them a contact number, but we won't do it through the village.
It won't be part of our contract.
I don't want us to get into the tree selling business either, so.
No.
So little under fifty percent of the people who lost a tree wanted a new one.
That is correct.
Or replied, okay.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to award the twenty-twenty-one tree contract to Johnson Nursery in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, thank you, Mr. Faulkner. Uh, now we have announcements.
Did you wanna go first for Sidle?
Huh?
Did you wanna go first for Sidle?
For what?
Sidle.
Oh, no, you can do it.
I was, I only wanted to go first for, um, Kids Fest. I don't know if anyone made it to that, but that was a, a pretty amazing event, and kudos to Erin on a fabulous job. It was really busy in the park, super hot. She, she did a fantastic job with that event, like always, and it brings a lot of people in this village, so. Just wanted to say thanks and say it was great.
Also, I know the park, they were cars.
Yeah.
There was a lot of people that, I mean, that was kinda, that was kinda, this was the first time, I think, during Kids Fest, I was in Heartland, and it was, I mean, but I mean, it was just, yeah, so, it was, and a lot of people have a good time, so.
The National Night Out was a, was a good program. It was, uh, it was fun, and the police vehicles, they were very scary and impressive. Uh, the fire trucks, the kid, the number of little kids that were in the trucks, and in the police cars, getting photographs. Those are gonna be there for their lifetime, you know, it was just, what a great thing, and our, our, you know, our, our staff, our people are just so friendly. You know, this is just a great place to live, and it just, I, I think that could be a really a, a bigger, bigger event than it has been. Delafield came over with the police, that was kinda cool. Went to him, moved back a little bit, but they didn't have big cars. And, uh, it was just a great event, and it's just, the number of people that came out, just to see it, you know, this is Heartland. It's safe, you can go out and walk around, it's great. So thank you very much, you know, you guys that put it on, it was a great event, and I look forward to having, having the next year.
Any other announcements from the board? I just wanted to say, and I know that, uh, you know, trustee Doro called, and, and had mentioned this, so I don't wanna just take, uh, like it was just my idea. Um, but it was very neat to see, uh, with Molly Sidle taking that bronze medal, and to have it listed for the entire world to see from Heartland, Wisconsin. Um, it is pretty cool. That's the first time, I think, I've seen it on that much of a large scale, uh, since Ben Askren was in the UFC, to be quite honest. But to see a, as more and more people, uh, are able to pinpoint us on the map, but for her achievements, and for it to only be her, her third marathon, and for her to take a bronze medal, that's pretty awesome, pretty awesome. I know that when I first moved here, she was, you know, in the paper, um, you know, that was through the two thousand five, six, seven, eight, nine. But, um, it's a really, really cool thing when you see our, what we call our little village, um, in the big show. So, uh, obviously, I, if it's okay with the board, we had talked about it a little bit, but I'd like to get a letter out on village letterhead, just saying on behalf of our board, um, in the village of Heartland, that we extend our, our utmost congratulations, and, uh, think that she was fantastic, and thank you for, you know, for letting the world know, uh, that there's someone from Heartland that can mop up anybody in a, in a, in a woman's marathon, for sure. Um, and I don't really have too many more announcements, other than say, thank you to trustee Lutke. There was some minor, I'll say minor, but it could've gotten bad, but flooding, um, where we just had a catch basin. Uh, the village is addressing it, so that it'll get fixed, but, um, uh, some minor flooding on East Capital, but she took the time to actually call and make sure that it would get taken care of. So, uh, obviously, the, uh, the people that step up and do work for the village, whether it's people on staff or people on boards, it's, uh, I guess their work is just never done. Uh, and with that, uh, any other announcements from the board?
Good.
Just had one quick thing to advise the board on. It was brought to my attention that Waukesha County Health and Human Services is closing their juvenile center, which is unfortunate, especially a county in a metro, um, area, and especially the one our size. Um, but it looks like they're gonna contract with some neighboring counties yet to be named, which is always interesting. Um, the unfortunate part for local police departments is, we used to drop subjects off, um, at a juvenile detention facility in Waukesha, and now we have to actually transport wherever they get placed, which could be Rock County, Dane County, Racine County. Those are all municipalities that are having talks and looking to contract. If it was me, I think some of those counties should be contracting with Waukesha County. So again, I think maybe save the county some money, but definitely puts a lot of the burden back onto the municipal partners, which is unfortunate.
When is that going to back, sorry?
October first.
So if the county's gonna be saving all that money, are they gonna reimburse us for gasoline?
I love it, I, I think it's a great idea.
I mean, I mean, I, I think we should ask them.
So, I do see us moving more and more in those directions, where the county's looking for ways to cut costs, and then are ultimately pushing those back on to the municipalities. It started with female juvenile, um, individuals, now it's with the male and the entire rest of the population. So then that just brings increased costs, and it's not like it's running rampant here in Heartland. But the day that I talked with our Health and Human Services, we had a thirty-mile pursuit with what ended up being a juvenile in a stolen car out of Milwaukee, and we had a, a, a real hard time getting that placement done. And that's before all of this. Um, literally hours of an officer's time off the road, just trying to find placement. So although it doesn't happen often, when it happens, it's impactful, especially to a smaller police department. And we just don't have the staff to run around all over sou- southern Wisconsin.
How long could we store somebody in our, uh, station?
Uh, my hope is as soon as possible they're out of here, um, because there's a lot of things that go with becoming a detention facility. We are not a detention facility, we are just, um, a, a facility that we can interview, and then temporary hold if it's like turning over to a parent or a responsible party for an operating well-intoxicated case. But other than that, it's going to county jail to mental health, or to now some juvenile facility to be named as quick as possible, because otherwise, I gotta have staff sitting there and watching them. It's not, you can't just lock them in a room and then go back on a road and patrol, you literally gotta watch that individual. So either way, it's staff time for me.
I guess what I was thinking is that, all the, I mean, those penalties have the same problem.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we get a bus, you know, like a, a bus that pick comes through once a week or every, you know, so many days, and just, hey, throw your garbage in here and we'll take it. And, uh, you know, I just wondered if, that, if we could hold it for a while, you know, maybe a couple of days like that, that we could just, you know, get with the other facilities, the other, everybody's got the same problem.
Right, and I think juvenile issues for, because there's different classifications for juvenile. There's like a shelter care facility, that means you're not being locked up for criminal charges. It could be because you're a chronic runaway, it could be because parents are refusing custody, could be for a bunch of different reasons. But then there's actually a detention facility, that means you committed a crime, that typically, why you're going there would be charges of felony as an adult. Um, those are, we're not running rampant with those, so that's a good thing. But again, when it happens, that's hours of time now, I have an officer out of the village, trying to figure out where this individual's going.
Okay, the other thought I had was, would it be more effective and save us money by really hiring a security firm to pick up our people and take them to those locations, rather than taking our officer off of his duty?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of different ideas to do it, but potentially, I mean, I wouldn't have the solid answer for you off the top of my head, but potentially.
Everybody's got the same problem, that's a lot of money. I mean, you look at an officer now, just out of the county, he'd be tied up from the morning till the afternoon, about three quarters of the day, and he's not, you know, then he's off his shift.
I would say this, the juvenile problem is very small compared to a mental health issue.
To talk about those things outside of announcements at some point, and look into those issues, you know, and, and dig deeper into it. But I'm, I'm glad that you brought it to our attention to.
Just so you guys are aware, and the impacts it then brings downstream to us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
I may come out from my adjourn. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.